Okay, thank you. Please be seated. So this is the 19th meeting of council. This is a special council meeting related to the municipal budget. I'm going to start with a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are gathered today on the traditional lands of the Anishinaabe, Haudenosaunee, Leni Powok, and Atawan-dron peoples. We honor and respect the history, languages, and culture of the diverse indigenous people who call this territory home. We acknowledge all of the treaties that are specific to this area: the two-row Wampum Belt Treaty of the Haudenosaunee Confederacy, silver covenant chain, the beaver hunting grounds of the Haudenosaunee Nanfan Treaty of 1701, the McKee Treaty of 1790, London Township Treaty of 1796, the Huron Track Treaty of 1827 with the Anishinaabe, and the dish with one spoon covenant wampum of the Anishinaabe and Haudenosaunee. The three indigenous nations that are neighbors to London are the Chipewas of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames, and the Muncie Delaware Nation who all continue to live as sovereign nations with individual and unique languages, cultures, and customs. The City of London is also committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for meetings upon request. To make a request specific to this meeting, please contact councilagenda@london.ca or 519-661-2489, extension 2425. With that, we do not have an Oh Canada performer, but we do have recording, and so I'll just ask you to rise for the playing of the National Anthem.
(singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
All right, thank you. Please be seated. All right, we're on to disclosures of pecuniary interest. I'll look for any colleagues who have any disclosures. Seeing none, there are no recognitions today. There are no reviews of matters from confidential matters to reconsider in public. We have no closed session. We have no minutes to sign. We have one communication. I have a motion to refer that to the relevant part of the agenda, which is in 8.3. So I'll look for a mover for that. Counselor Ferrer, seconded by Counselor Vamir Bergen. Any discussion on the referral to that point in the agenda? Okay, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Great. We have no motions to which notice was given. What we do have is three reports, and I'll just outline how this is going to work. First, councillor Plows of the Budget Chair had to be pulled away at the last moment. The vice chair, councillor Lehman, is going to present the three reports. Just as a quick overview, the first report is the tabling of the budget report. The second report is the public participation meeting. The third report is the work we did last week, which has the 16 votes that we had. This includes the amendments that were made, but also the things that we basically just received. I know one councillor would like to pull at least one of those items, which is item 16. Councillor Lehman, if you could make a note of that. And at that time, we can consider an amendment, an alternate path on item 16 under the 8.3 report. So that's how we'll proceed, and then I'll have councillor Lehman present the first of the three reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to present the fourth report of the Budget Committee.
Okay, and this was the tabling of the budget report, so I'll look for anybody who'd like any of those items dealt with separately. Seeing none, any comments on this report? Okay, we'll open that for voting. I'm having an eScribe issue, so I will vote yes.
Noted, thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Councillor Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor, and I will put on for the fifth report of the Budget Committee.
Perfect. This is the public participation meeting. There's really only one item. Any discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Go ahead, councillor Lehman.
Thank you, and I will now put the sixth report of the Budget Committee on the floor.
Yes, and just for colleagues' reference, you'll see one through nine are the actual amendments that were made. 10 through 16 were the other votes we considered and did not proceed with amendments, but this was structured this way so that, like councillor McAllister would like to do, to make a change to one of those things that we didn't proceed on. So right now, all of it's on the floor with the exception of 16. Would anybody like anything else dealt with separately? Councillor Frank.
Thank you. Can I vote against number eight?
Yes, we could deal with eight separate. Yes. Anything else anybody wants separately?
Eleven, please.
Oh, I couldn't quite make that out, councillor Stevenson.
Eleven, please.
Eleven, sure.
Which is the health unit.
Yep, we can do that separate. All right, anything else colleagues who'd like dealt with separately? Okay. I don't see any, so I'm going to let councillor Lehman craft a motion with what's left.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is I'd like to put items one through seven, nine, 10, 12, 13, 14, and 15. I'll move those.
Okay, those are on the floor. Any discussion on any of those items? Okay, seeing none, we will open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Go ahead, councillor Lehman.
Thank you. I'd now like to put on item number eight. That was bold.
Okay, that's item number eight, 4.9. Any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll open that for voting.
Closing the vote, motion carries 11 to 3.
Go ahead, councillor Lehman.
I'd like to now put item 11 regarding 4.3, budget case P2, on the floor.
Okay, that's on the floor. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, then we'll open item 11 for voting.
Councillor Brad Mehirberg. Closing the vote, motion carries 11 to 3.
Go ahead, councillor Lehman.
Finally, I'd like to put on number 16 on the floor, understanding there is an amendment coming to that.
Okay, that's on the floor. Just give me one sec. Okay, so that's on the floor. Councillor McAllister has an amendment to this. Councillor McAllister, I can put it up on the screen if you need to read it out, unless you have it with you. If you refresh, it should be up. I offered to second it so that you could proceed.
Okay, thank you. Through the mayor, yes, thank you for seconding. I can read it out for colleagues. So that the mayor's table 2026 annual budget update be amended in order to fund the Housing Stability Bank program. $250,000 for 2026 from the Community Investment Reserve Fund. 2026 operating expenditures, $250,000. 2026 levy, zero, and capital expenditures for '26 also zero. It being noted that future funding for the Housing Stability Bank can be brought forward for debate of the 2027 update, and that the level of funding for the next multi-year budget may warrant review based on future demand for this program.
Okay.
Oh, and there's also it being noted that correspondence is received from the Salvation Army.
Okay, so that's on the floor, seconded by myself. We can have a debate and discussion on this. Any debate? Would you like to proceed, councillor McAllister?
Yeah, thank you. And through the mayor, appreciate the opportunity to bring this back, recognizing, you know, the conversation we had at the Budget Committee. I still think there's a lot of value in this, understanding that this would just be for 2026, but I do see the need in this community. I have residents who personally access this program, and they are oversubscribed as is with the communication received from the Salvation Army. Any additional funding that they can receive, we know there's a need and that it will be used, so I am happy to put this forward. Again, listening to the conversation we had at committee, I know there was desire for communication from the Salvation Army to provide the information in terms of the program and its usage to date. Also recognizing, you know, that this isn't necessarily something that we as a municipality cannot handle all of the issues around housing, but this is one area where we can make a difference. This is a proactive program. We're keeping people housed. We've spent a lot of time at council talking about homelessness, but those are reactive measures, and this is a proactive step that we can do right now for next year to keep people housed. So I really encourage my colleagues to support this. It is just for the one year. It is from the reserve fund. Also recognizing what staff said in terms of not bringing the reserve fund below a level that they don't feel is appropriate based on our policy, I think that this is a path forward, which I hope I can get wider support from based on what we discussed at committee. Again, I just want to stress the importance of this program. It is needed. The current environment that we're facing, especially with the rental market, there is a need in the community for this, not just in my area, but across the city. This is something we can do, and I really encourage my council colleagues to support it. Thank you.
I have councillor Aman and then myself on the speakers list.
Thank you. And through you, just wanted to say I appreciate the amendment and the discussion that we're having. I'm willing to get behind this. It's a 2026 budget amendment coming from the reserve fund. I was a little bit challenged on that one. If it was for 2027, just because of the position it put the reserve it put the reserve fund in as well. And I had a, you know, good back and forth with the Salvation Army about this discussion as well, and really did appreciate the communication coming forward from them to give us some more information and ways to interpret that information. What I think it's important for the community to understand as well about this is, when they came to us at first with the initial budget amendment in the multi-year budget, they asked for additional funds, then later, there were some changes in terms of how they receive funding and where they can allocate funding as it relates to electricity costs. So the Ontario Energy Board made a decision that anybody that was in electricity arrears needed to be supported through funding at the Housing Stability Bank, which helped to free up more dollars for their programming as well through London Hydro and the OEB. So obviously, there is considerable need, which is why that additional pool of money and this, they're still running out every month. So happy to support this and hoping for a report later on at Community and Protective Services to get some more information about how these funds will be used and any changes to the program. Thank you.
Great, I'll turn the chair over to Deputy Mayor Lewis, because I have myself on the speakers list.
Go ahead, Mayor Morgan.
Thank you, I will be brief on this one, I'm going to support councillor McAllister's amendment, which is why I was willing to second it, I appreciate his dialogue on this. I also appreciate the approach that he took. He listened to what colleagues said around the table, the organization reached out, they provided additional context. I think he was also respectful of the debate in proposing the amendment in the way that he did, using a reserve fund that council does have discretion and control over, being respectful of the balance and the implications of that, and also doing it just for 2026, which allows future decision-making to be made down the road. I think all of those pieces together was a very respectful and appropriate way to approach the amendment on a program that we know is important to the city, and I will emphasize, was not a program that we cut, but we did not support an expansion to it at the start of the multi-year budget. I think this modest expansion to it will help some people in the interim, as we continue to advocate for the other things, I think, across the system, including at the provincial level that can aid those who are in precarious housing situations and need some support. So I think a good amendment, I'm fully behind it, and I want to thank the councillor for the approach that he took to this amendment.
Thank you, Mayor Morgan, returning the chair to you.
Sure, and I have you next on the speakers list, so you go ahead.
You do, so I'm going to say that I will be reluctantly supporting this, and I say reluctantly for multiple reasons. I don't think the way this came before us in the Budget Committee was actually appropriate, and I don't think that, for me, the communication from the Salvation Army after the fact doesn't hold weight. Like, any organization could have written a letter after the fact and said, yes, of course we'll take the money. However, I do appreciate the approach that councillor McAllister has taken to use this from a reserve fund for one year as an emergency measure, from a reserve fund that we have council discretion over. I would not support a further expansion of this program on the property tax levy, I don't think it's good to take from one household to do support on rental for another household. But I do acknowledge and councillor McAllister's comments about the need out there, yes, it's there. I disagree that it's proactive, I think this continues to be a reactive situation. I think the proactive situation is what we are seeing out there in the community, the Vision Soho redevelopment that will start welcoming tenants to new affordable housing units in 2026, the partnerships with organizations like St Vincent de Paul, building in councillor Cuddy's Ward, the work that is happening with LMCH building new builds. Housing is the answer, not income redistribution. So for me, I'm supporting this reluctantly, but I'm supporting it as an interim step from a reserve fund that we have, as the mayor mentioned, discretionary control over. I would not support this if it was permanent, if it was coming on the property tax levy, I think this is a year-by-year approach to things. But for me, the long-term solution to housing affordability is housing inventory on the market and affordable housing in the 80% AMR, the RGI and the highly supportive housing realms. We know Elmwood Place is underway on highly supportive, has another example, the Home for Heroes project at Parkwood Hospital for veterans is underway. Those are the initiatives that I think we should be making the long-term investments in to address this problem, not drawing from reserve funds for temporary relief on an individual basis. It's housing inventory, not income supports that the municipality can deliver. With that said, provincially, income supports, ODSP and OW in particular, and the shelter allowance, still extremely inadequate in the London market and in every other market and every other major urban center across this province, and arguably, you could say the same thing about the assistance programs across this country. You can't get a place for $500 a month in the City of London, Ontario. And so ODSP and OW rates have to be addressed, but that is not something we can do. So as an interim step for the short term, I'll support this. But I wanted to lay that out now, because should this group or a variation of this group that I'm a part of be here next year, I will not be supporting a continuing add to this fund every year. We've seen what happened in other municipalities where in Windsor it's ballooned to $2.6 million a year, because we will never be able to backfill the entire amount on the property tax base. So I will support it this time, and I will say credit due to councillor McAllister, because I was not originally inclined to support this, but with the amendments he's made and brought forward, and the approach that he's taken for the source of funding, I can support it on this one-off basis.
Okay, any other speakers to this? Go ahead, councillor Trosaw.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, and through you. I'm not going to start the debate on what our budget deliberations are going to be next year, I'm sure we're going to have a very robust discussion about this. Many of the budget items that we look at target one group or one set of stakeholders at the expense of all the taxpayers. So I don't think that's a good criteria for determining what should go in the budget. What I want to stress, and I hope I'm wrong, we've just seen new provincial legislation pass, and from everything that I'm hearing, I have no reason to disbelieve what some of the experts are saying, we are going to see an increase in rent default evictions. This is an essential program. And again, I think I really want to commend councillor McAllister for bringing this forward in a way that we can all support. But the underlying root problem, that being that rents are too high, income is too low, people are being displaced, and people fall behind in rent for a variety of reasons. This is a compassionate program, I would have preferred to see it at the higher level, but I'm very happy that we've been able to work out, we've been able to work out a situation here where we can all support it. So I'm hoping to see a unanimous vote on this, and to be continued, because this problem of rents being too high and people being displaced is not going away. And as a member of CAPS in our last council year, I'm going to be monitoring this very carefully. Thank you, thank you.
Any other speakers to this? Okay, so this is on the amendment moved by councillor McAllister, seconded by myself. We're going to open that for voting. Councillor Trosaw, can we have your microphone, please?
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Okay, and now we need an as amended motion for that, so councillor McAllister, if you're willing to do the as amended motion, you've got to stand up again, I'll second the as amended. So this is the as amended, this is everything, this actually brings into effect the actual amendment to the table budget, so we'll vote on that now.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to 0.
Councillor Lehman.
Thank you, that concludes the sixth report of the Budget Committee.
Okay, and that concludes addressing all of the amendments that council has made to the budget, which means we've concluded that piece. We have no added reports, no deferred matters, any inquiries, seeing none. Emergent motions, there are none. Bylaws, we only have the confirming bylaw, I'll just remind colleagues, this is the same confirming bylaw that we do at the end of every meeting, this is not actually related to any sort of budget approval in any sort of way. The way that we, the process we've gone through is, the budget was tabled, council made recommendations on amendments, those amendments have been approved or incorporated into the budget, that is the budget and the budget is finalized. This is not a global vote on the budget, this is just the confirming bylaw that we do at the end of each meeting, that also gives direction to the clerk and I to bring into effect all of the components that happen at the meeting today if we have to do so. So just wanted to be clear, in case anybody thought they were voting on the budget now, we've actually concluded that piece, we're just voting on the confirming bylaw. So I'll look for a mover and a seconder of the confirming bylaw today, councillor Hillier and seconded by councillor Trosaw, and we'll do first reading now, and we'll open that for voting. All right, second reading, same mover and seconder, you're okay with that? Councillor Hillier, councillor Trosaw, yes? Okay, we'll open second reading on the confirming bylaw, I'll see if there's any speakers. Seeing none, we'll open second reading for voting.
Motion carries 14 to 0.
And same mover and seconder, third and final reading of the confirming bylaw, we'll open that for voting.
Motion carries 14 to 0.
Great, and before I adjourn, I'm not going to do a global talk about the budget, I'm not going to throw that in. What I do want to do is say is just thank you to our staff. Obviously, the preparation of the budget is months and months in the making, it requires all civic departments to participate, it requires all boards and commissions, I know all members of council participated through the process that we started earlier this year. I appreciate the work of both Budget Chair Ploza and Vice Chair Lehman on navigating us through the budget process. I just wanted to say just a global thank you to everybody involved in the budget process for the work that you did in bringing us to the point of approving the 2026 budget update. All of that work kind of ends now, and I guess you started thinking about the 2027 budget, but for now, I just wanted to say thanks on behalf of council for the work that was done to all involved. And with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Councillor Van Meerebergen, seconded by councillor Hopkins, we can do this one by hand, all those in favor of adjournment?
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, we're adjourned.